Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. And it's nice to be back here in our chamber. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bales?
Here.
Councilmember Curran?
Here.
Councilmember Dwork?
Here.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Here.
Mayor Stone?
Here. And if you'd rise and join me for a pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we can take a moment of silence, please, to remember two things tonight. One, obviously, yesterday was Memorial Day, and we have a lot of individuals to remember as far as those that gave that ultimate sacrifice. Then also, we should sit here and really hope to get back to some sort of normalcy at some point soon, so just take a moment, please. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have an agenda before us. Are there any corrections or changes?
Will we approve the agenda, Mayor?
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Approval of minutes. We'll start with the April 20th, 2020 work session. Any changes?
Will we approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for the April 20th work session as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is April 27th, 2020, regular meeting. Any changes?
Mayor, move to approve the April 27th, 2020, regular meeting minutes. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for April 27th as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Abstentions?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is the May 18th, 2020 work session. Anything?
Move to approve the May 18th work session minutes?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for May 18th as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Were you there? Thank you. All right. All right, moving on. Ordinance resolutions and PUDs. We'll start off tonight with ordinance 20-09.
This is the first reading of an ordinance by Beaver Creek City Council enacting a new Chapter 39 income tax to the codified ordinances of the city of Beaver Creek.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. I thought we'd first... Bear with me just for a minute here. Okay, there we go. Very sensitive. Good evening, again. I just wanted to go over, again, this is the ordinance for the income tax, but I thought it'd be a little bit beneficial to go over some of the history of how we actually arrived at this plateau at this point. About 2017, '18, during the long-term financial strategy sessions with the city council, we had a couple of goals in mind, and one was to ensure the foundation of our existing revenue sources and try to stabilize those. We wanted to diversify the revenue sources and also develop a long-term goal for continuing operations and addressing capital infrastructure priorities, not only now but in the future, and address the backlog. That was kind of the walking orders of the city council back two or three years ago. And again, we've done a very good job in stabilizing the current revenue sources that we have out there, the levies. Again, if you recall, I believe it's seven out of eight are now continuing on a permanent basis, the last one being the street levy that we'll be talking about here shortly. And then the other goal was trying to figure out how to determine the most cost-effective way to implement that strategy and when we could implement and what the timeline looked like. So we proceeded to develop a timeline for alternative revenue sources based on our levy schedule. And then, I have several years ago, but it's probably more like 20 months ago, there was a residential group that also had some similar mission to the city, and that was to look at alternative revenue sources. And the Beaver Creek Fair Funding Committee got a core group and expanded that group to come up with some solutions related to how to go about looking at alternative revenue sources and what they would look like, and they made their presentation to the city council in February. Again, the goal of the Beaver Creek Fair Funding Committee was basically in line with what the city was looking for, and that was to distribute the funding of the city services between residents and non-residents that utilize the service and infrastructure, diversify the tax base, again, looking at the difference between property tax and an earned income tax. To provide relief, another big item was provide relief for property taxes to our residents, and then provide funding for not only current operations but future operations, and then, like we said, generate some money to look at the infrastructure backlog that we have on the books right now. We've had in our five-year capital plan for quite a long time that basically have been postponed due to recessions and the current tax structure that we have. So after reviewing not only the alternative revenue situation that we had and the financial strategy, reviewing the resident group proposal that came forward about the alternative revenue source, the city's timeline, you recall that council requested us to take a look at it and develop a income tax ordinance and a tax code for residents' consideration. That's basically what you have before you. And again, so what we have tonight is the first reading of that. Just wanted to show you what the process would look like if we pushed that forward. The second reading would be on June 8th, and I believe city council has already requested that maybe we have a third reading on this important issue. That would be June 22nd. And then, the last component of that would be to actually put it on the November ballot, November 3rd ballot, and that would require a resolution to be developed and to be implemented by July 27th. What else you have here, Pete? So again, I just wanted to go over some of the high points of the tax ordinance that you have before you. One, the ORC requires us to call this an income tax. It really is more clearly aligned with an earnings tax if you start looking at the income that is taxable and what's exempt. In 2016, we didn't, we weren't really affected by it, but all the municipalities around us were. In 2016, the state passed a revision to the Ohio Revised Code under Chapter 718 for the income tax, and basically eliminated a lot of the variables that municipalities had in what they taxed and what they didn't. They don't tax any longer. So again, basically, the ORC drives the income tax that we have now. We have a couple of variables, and the variables are really the rate that we set, the day we want to have it implemented, the credits that you can give to your residents that work in other municipalities, and then, in our case, we also have the variable of making sure that that 3.4-voted street mill drops off after it expires if the tax ordinance would be approved by the residents. So we built all that in. Again, we've exempted everything in the higher revised code that they allow us to as far as income goes, and that would be military pay, social security benefits, unemployment, intangible income, which is the interest, capital gains and dividends. So that's all incorporated in the ordinance itself. So in summary, the bottom line is how we got here and why we're here, and does this all fit in with the long-term financial strategy? And you can see, we believe that the income tax that we're bringing forward to you today represents that culmination of that strategy that we developed. Again, diversifies the city's revenues and reduces our sole dependence on property tax. Obviously, everybody knows that that's where we get the majority of our revenue for operating the city and doing capital projects. The proposal also reduces the 3.4-mill street levy that expires in December 31st, 2021, because this income tax, if it were adopted by the residents, approved by the residents, wouldn't take effect till January 1st of 2022. So that aligns perfectly with that plan to let the 3.4-mill expire, reduces the future property taxes that we might have to levy. Again, in our process of making the levies continuing, a lot of them, we could have asked for increases. We elected to use the fund balance and continue those as long as we could in that five-year cycle that we got away from. But again, those are coming up for renewals probably in two or three years from now. And again, this income tax would eliminate the need for us to go back and, again, do additional property tax initiatives. Again, requires the non-residents to pay their fair share of using city services and infrastructure that they use on a daily basis when they come into work here or shop or whatever they're doing. And then, again, eliminates the subsidy of the surrounding tax authorities where the non-residents come in working in the city. Because we don't have an income tax, that money goes back to the city in which they live. So it would eliminate the outflow of funds from the city where they're generated, and the tax should be generated here, and being sent out to the other municipalities that have an income tax. So, and again, we wanted to emphasize that, you know, it'll provide 100% credit, up to the 1% for residents who work and pay their workplace jurisdiction. So again, there won't be any tax implications to them under this proposal. I just wanted to add this final thought. Again, I know there's a lot of questions. There's a lot of things that we've tried to identify some of the key points in this for educating the residents of what's in store and what the income tax actually, ordinance actually looks like. We've put quite a few things out there. It'll be on the website, I believe, tonight or tomorrow morning, related to all of these things, including the tax code itself, the ordinance, past presentations made to city council, not only by staff but the BFFC, and also frequently asked questions. We're starting to get some right now, and I'm sure that list will grow, but was the high points that we thought might, the average person might be interested to find out. And we also, just like we did last time, we have an income tax calculator estimator that you can actually put in your particular information, going out and getting your assessed value from the property, the Green County Auditor's Office, plugging that in, and by putting in your individual information in there, it's not individualized or saved anywhere, but you can see what your tax liability would be with an income tax if it were to pass. And that all will be on our city website at www.bearcreek.gov. And with that, what I thought I'd let Steve do is get into all the specifics related to the ordinance. You've had an opportunity to take a look at it, and we've been through them for several weeks now, and the culmination of all that, like I said, the ORC dictates the majority of everything in there. The few variables that we did have, we've kind of gone over, but Steve would like to emphasize a couple of things in there that might be of interest to not only council but the residents.
All right, please.
Want to sit here or?
However you want to do it, Mr. McHugh, whatever makes you comfortable.
I'll go stand up since I'm kind of sitting in the hallway.
There you go. Let me wipe you down here.
Wipe it down there.
There you go.
Wait six feet, I'll come back right.
All right, thank you. Okay. Some of this is, I know will be redundant because Bill and I did not coordinate all of our discussion points, but I just want to go through some of the points, and also for those who want to write down the page numbers, in case anyone wants to write page numbers down, that's fine, but, and this is the last version printed off the agenda this afternoon, so I could kind of make sure the pages aligned here. But, and again, as Bill said, the process is the ordinance, and then, under 718.04, it requires then that council has to adopt a resolution. And since resolutions take effect, that would be, that could be passed late in July, once this goes into effect, and then at that point, the process would be the, as is any levy, the clerk would then, Diane would put that on the ballot, and our certified copies take it down the board of elections, it's certified, put on the ballot. So as far as, again, the tax rate, it is 1%. That is on page four, so I'll just cite some of these sections, 39012B. Additionally in there, and something I think that's important, is that there is specific language in Section C of that section on page four with respect to the 3.4-mill street levy set to expire. So that was considered something important that, so that if this is adopted, it says in the code it will expire as of 12/31/21, I believe it is. But that will expire. What then happens, though, is under Section 13, the funds do go in, because I know there's been one comment about funds going in the general fund, and one of the key points in there also added was that the revenue collected in the general fund that equals, will effectively be the last year of taxation of the 3.4-mill street levy, will then be placed or set aside by appropriation. That's one of the commitments of council in this levy. So whatever that amount is, will then be set aside and appropriated for that street levy. So there really is no, I mean, it's just, you know, the citizens will still get the benefits of the street levy. I think that was very important in talking to the manager and Ms. Caceres, that felt that was very strong. The effective date is 1/1/22. That's on page five. Then on page eight, there is a laundry list of exempt income, and just some of the ones I want to touch on, too. Again, military pay, intangible income. You actually have to look at page 12 for a definition of intangible income in there, but what would be most insightful for most people would be interest, capital gains, dividends. Interestingly, though, gambling, prizes, lottery winnings, those would not be. Those are not, while they may be deemed intangible income in certain tax codes, they are not exempt. So I just pointed out. Social security benefits, that's certainly a big one. Unemployment compensation in today's situation, that would not be. Retirement benefit payments, which would qualify probably a number of individuals, those are not, those are exempt. Payment for annuities, so if someone has investments in annuities, those are exempt. And alimony and child support received, so it's very, very important that certain individuals get alimony and child support. Those are exempt. We would not tax those. And then, as I think it was all reported, there is no exemption under 18 because we had to have had a tax code prior to the end of 15. So that doesn't qualify. As far as income, these are pretty much what you would, I think what you would assume would be, impact most individuals, your salary, your qualifying wages, commission. So if you're paid instead of a straight salary, you're paid on commission, that's exempt. Tips are not exempt, but is taxed, excuse me, that's income. Bonuses, fees and gratuities, those are. Those would all be subject to income. That's on page 11, Item 14. Also on page 12, again, of Item 14B in that one case, as far as non-residents, it is all income. So the idea is that, as this is an earnings tax, effectively, non-residents are going to be taxed for their wages. You know, and again, their wages could be the salaries, qualifying, commissions, tips, those same items. So we actually define it as all income, salaries, commissions and other compensation paid. So sort of just a broad sweep for non-residents. One thing I think also comes up, and I think is on page 21 and 22, and it's Section 39.042, and that is domicile. And domicile is important because there are likely some residents of Beaver Creek whose domicile is not, they may, you know, especially if they're retired, they may have another residence somewhere else. It's not uncommon for people to have a second place in Florida these days. If they are there long enough, they would not, their domicile would be Florida, not Ohio, and therefore, anything, you know, they earn here or any of their income that might otherwise be taxed would, most likely, should be exempt because they would fall under what were the laws of Ohio, of Florida, excuse me. Things for people to consider, though, if you're domiciled, is where's your permanent house? Where do you live? Where have you been filing your dom, you know, your tax returns? Where do you vote? What's your driver's license? Where's your real estate and do you claim exemptions for real estate? And where? Place of employment and your bank. There's other lists of items, but those are the main key, I think, when you're talking about somebody as far as domicile. Page 24, Section 39.05, collection at source. And again, because of the nature of this being an earnings tax, earnings are collected by the employer. I mean, that will be the vast, vast majority of funds collected will be through the employer and will be a deduction. So it'll just be along with the rest of the taxes, Ohio tax, federal tax, it'll be on your, it'll be a deduction off the tax, which then, you know, certainly means this is a good way to also assure that it's actually paid in many regards, too, and it becomes sort of seamless for people. As far as credit, that is page 43, as Bill mentioned, the credit. Simply put, if you work in another city and you are a resident of Beaver Creek, if that other city has an income tax equal to 1% or greater, you're not going to pay the Beaver Creek income tax because you're already paying it with your, what you earned in that other city. They've already collected it. So you get a credit, and so anytime there's a request, you know, with a tax return, you'll put down, you know, where you worked and what you paid, and the percentage higher, the Returns, there are, returns are to be filed. That's on page 46. A little more obscure, but it does occur, and people do do this. Page 58, 3912, rounding. If you're under 50 cents, you round down. If you're over 50 cents, you round up. You can. You don't have to. But if you, you know, a lot of times on tax returns, people round, and so that's, you know, the standard rule. It's in the code. One thing I think is very important, and this again mirrors Ohio law, but page 61, 39.14, subsection eight, all tax return information is confidential. The tax administrator cannot tell the city manager information. You can give some statistical data as long as it doesn't disclose, you know, who the company is or who the person is. If you have one or two people or one or two companies that are the vast majority of the community, you couldn't ask, you know, can you tell me who's, you know, company that does so-and-so, makes plastics? You know, what kind of payroll information they have, and what do the top officers make? Clearly, you couldn't do that. It is actually a felony in Ohio to disclose that information, so tax administrators I know are, take guard of that tax information, and they won't, they just will not disclose it. I mean, they may, some of them don't even really want to give much tatt at all, other than, we collected this amount. That's it, period. So, but it is confidential, so I think that's important. The other thing that's important, I believe, is page 65, 3918, local board of tax review. Again, this was a change that came in '16 of the tax code, but we will have to have a tax review board, three members. Council picks two. The manager will pick one. The first two are residents, cannot be employees. The one picked by the manager can be employee, but cannot be, if the person is an employee, cannot be involved with finance or tax department. And they have the power that if they feel, if someone appeals and feels they were not treated appropriately, or the rule was misinterpreted, or they were responsible, you know, responsible to pay a tax they didn't feel they had to because of some circumstance, they can overturn. And so it is a sort of check and balance due process there. And finally, page 69, information by landlords. Landlords will be responsible to report names and addresses of tenants. That's, that is in tax codes. So that's pretty much it. And then there's some other penalties and provisions like that for not filing, so, yeah, I just wanted to kind of go through some of what I thought were some of the points that have already been mentioned, and a few other points I thought council might find of interest in the citizens also. Thank you. Thank you. All right. This is the first reading, and we have become accustomed, even though it's not required by charter, we've become accustomed to allowing public input at a first reading. And so at this time, I would like to open it up for public input, and as you, most everybody here knows, we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes unless you have others donate time up to a total of nine. So if we can have a name and address, please?
Harold Luns, 1423 Town Hall. First thing I'd like to say, I wish people would read the city charter again. We voted to change that the first reading, public input. And if somebody wants to read this, I'd be glad to give it to you. We got two readings now, first public input, the second, no public input. There's an option for a third. So it's me, and if anybody wants to read it, I'll pass it up there. Okay, first, I'd like to say, I'm not opposed to an income tax. I'm opposed to what I'm seeing here. What I've heard tonight is an ordinance. It's three pages long. The tax code is an attachment to this. The only thing in here is 1%. There is nothing in here about a credit. So this thing about a credit, after it passes the city council, can undo it. I mean, they could say, no credit. We are not voting on no credit. Period and final. That is not what's in this ordinance. Read it. Read the ordinance. And I suspect, like most of us, we have not read that 62-page ordinance. Okay. The other thing is, we've got an email from somebody in the city, I forget who it was, it's irrelevant, that about a 1%, you can't have more than 1% without a vote of the public. True, but there's a big move afoot right now in the state of Ohio to do away with that. Okay, so let's put in this code that any tax above 1% must be voted upon by the citizens. Put it in there. The state could come along and change it tomorrow, and you all then can change it to 1.5% the next day. Give us belief that what we're seeing and what we're hearing will eventually happen. Okay? I'm also concerned about, nowhere have I seen a discussion about public indebtedness. Back in 2008, 2009, we had a real problem in the communities that had an income tax. They were laying off people, they were concerned in Cincinnati about the ballpark, a lot of other stuff. Let's put a limit on what our public indebtedness can be. I don't know how to do that, but say it cannot exceed more than 10% of the average of the prior three years. But if we build a new city hall, and we all know that's first on the agenda, we got to go into public indebtedness to do that, and the income tax is going to be used to do it. What happens now if we have another coronavirus and we don't get the income tax? So let's put a limit on what we can go in. I won't vote for it unless it's in there, and I support an income tax. I won't vote for it unless there's something about the credit, there's something about public indebtedness, there's something about a public vote. credit, there's something about public indebtedness, there's something about a public vote, anything over 1%. Sooner or later, we're going to get one. But that's, that's, a lot of people are concerned right now because of the number of unemployed people. We got, and we got employed people, but they're only working half-time. I got a real problem with a college student having to pay an income tax, you know, trying to pay for his college while they're going, him or her. So let's, don't rush into this. We still got time. You got to August to vote on this, I think. So let's do it right. Let's do it right. I mean, come on. If we don't understand what's in the city charter, I guarantee you, we don't understand what's in that 62-page document, and it's obvious we don't understand what's in the ordinance, because the only thing in there is 1%. That's all that's in there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tony Corvo. I'm at 432 Ashton Court, Beaver Creek, Ohio, 45434. I oppose the income tax. I oppose it because an income tax is not just another way to raise revenue. All the emphasis on, here's column A, this is what you collect if you got, if you got property taxes. Here's column B, here's what you collect if you have an income tax. And you go through pages and pages of Excel spreadsheets, and you say, this is a great idea. Actually, I see this, I see this differently. An income tax, basically, we go from a system where we tell you how much to collect and what to do with it, to a system where the government tells us to cough it up and don't ask why. And also where the government has access to our most private information. Now, Steve talked about the tax collector, I'm sorry, the tax administrator, I think it's called. There have been cases in Ohio where they, if that information leaked, don't ask me why, how, but it was leaked. And people who ran for public office were embarrassed or shamed, where that information was leased by, leaked by their opponents who were in government at the time. So those leaks do occur. Government has access to our most private information. And it's a little differently if the person that has that information is in DC in some, you know, concrete building somewhere in some cubicle in the IRS. It's different when it's somebody close to home who has that information. As time goes on, if we need to, I'll go into my opposition in more detail. As, as information comes out, as you make your decisions, and we get in more, more direction as where this is going to go, I will make my opposition more detailed. But for now, I want you all to consider, just don't think about the good things that income tax will give you, all the unicorns, okay? Think also about the warts and the ogres involved, present company, you know, excluded out of that, of course, okay? But think about that. Don't think about it as a spreadsheet. Think about it as a fundamental change in the way you, the government, interact with the people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, anybody else like to speak?
Good evening.
Good evening. Mark Walsh, 434 Ramsgate Drive. And I, I strongly support the income tax. As I mentioned here, back in February, one of my big concerns is the school system. And as we know, as the school system goes, so goes your community. Our school system is having trouble at times passing levies. Part of that reason is the 14 mills that the city has on our taxes. Centerville has 2.5 mills for their city because they get enough income from the income tax to support the city. So I think it'd be very important to help the schools. But I tell you one thing, and you'll hear a lot of really logical financial arguments why to do this, but it kind of makes me mad, as a citizen, that 75% of the people who come to work in our city every day are from elsewhere, and they pay zero for our services. Many of the calls to our police are from non-residents. They pay nothing for that service. They use our roads, they pay nothing. The citizens of Beaver Creek have taken it upon themselves to totally fund the police and other services with property taxes. I don't think that's fair. If you're a Beaver Creek citizen, like I am, and I worked in Dayton, I paid Dayton 2.5% income tax on what I earned in Dayton, none of that money comes back to the city. A lot of people think we get that money shared with us, we get none of it. Then, if you have Dayton residents who work in Beaver Creek, because we do not have an income tax, that money goes back to Dayton. So Dayton gets my taxes, and it also gets the taxes from their citizens who work in Beaver Creek. So they double-dip us. I know my group will cringe when I say this, but the lower end of our estimate on what an income tax would bring in is probably 10 or 11 million dollars a year. If you look at the last 20 years of us not collecting this, we've been handing Kettering, Dayton, Centerville, 200 million dollars over the last 20 years. That's ridiculous, especially when you look at the condition of our roads. I live on the southern end of Beaver Creek, near Kettering. Stroop Road has been paved, it's beautiful, they put in two bridges, and I know some of that money comes from here. We are giving it to them, and that's what drives me crazy. So I'm sorry to inject any emotion into this, but I think, I think that has to come out, and I think the average citizen, if they knew it, would feel the same way. They just don't understand it, as we all know. So I encourage you to go forward and put the resolution on in November, and I think it would help make Beaver Creek a healthy community into the future and also help our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Brian Jarvis, 825 Timberwood Drive in Beaver Creek. Mayor, Vice Mayor, thank you so much for the time to speak to you. I've talked to a lot of citizens on this. I've, I've had some comments that were made as we talked to them about this income tax, and just read a few of their comments back. Williams said Beaver Creek is one of four Ohio cities that do not levy an earnings tax. If you pay an earnings tax where you work, none of that money comes back to Beaver Creek, as was just mentioned. Another person, Joseph, said over 75% of the jobs in Beaver Creek are held by non-residents. Without a city earnings tax, Beaver Creek is missing out on significant revenue by not keeping taxes here from people who work in Beaver Creek but live elsewhere. Martin said that most Beaver Creek residents already pay an earnings tax where they work, others will pay a very small amount for the very first time. The taxes Beaver Creek will collect from non-residents who work here will improve our city and make us less reliant on local property taxes. There were four issues on my Beaver Creek Fair Funding Committee. There were four issues we were trying to solve. One was many residents say their property taxes are way too high. Some residents say they're being pushed out of their homes by taxes. We have residents, some who pay a tax at some place, and some who don't, who don't want to pay much more. And I can appreciate that. I don't, nobody likes paying taxes. That's a very, that's okay. Big thing is, non-residents are not paying their fair share for local public services. And finally, without an alternative revenue source, the city won't be able to maintain its aging infrastructure, provide quality-of-life amenities, or address residents' concerns. Now, we had a, we thought a very good income tax plan in place, and then in January, we came to the city work session and found out that the city had its levy options plans for its foundation of moving forward. And what that did, that had a series of proposals for property taxes that were going to go on the ballot, if the income tax did not, in November of 2020, and then next year's primary and general election, and next year's primary and general election. And those were just to maintain services with very little increase in staffing, and they didn't address the $200 million backlog of work the city hasn't performed yet. When you added all those up, that was close to eight or nine additional mills, along with a renewal of the street levy that is on the ballot, that is on the levy right now. So we saw all those add up, and income tax, you could let the levy, 3.4 mill levy expire, and then not have those additional levies go on the ballot. Beaver Creek has had a 100% success rate in passing levies over the past 10 years. Those are likely to pass. Having nine or 10 mills additional levies on top of what's there right now would push our city to having the highest city property effective mileage rate in Montgomery and Greene Counties. It's huge. The alternative that we have of a 1% earned income tax with the property tax rollback and not putting those levies on the ballot in the first place would save all of our residents a lot of money, have non-residents pay here, and would benefit Beaver Creek in the long term. I'd like to just hope that you do consider putting this on the ballot in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council tonight?
Carol Graff, 1442 Devo Drive, Beaver Creek, 45434. Very short. With an earnings tax, if you don't earn, you don't pay. So those people out of work wouldn't have to pay. On the other hand, you own property. Whether you are earning or not earning, you owe that property tax, and you have to pay it at some point. And so it costs you whether or not you are working. An earnings tax would reduce the reliance on property taxes, not eliminate them, but reduce the reliance while providing all the essential municipal services, perhaps even address the infrastructure needs, some of which have been on the books since 1984. This would broaden the payer tax base of users between those who live here and those who work here in the city of Beaver Creek. And I, my memory might not be the very best, but my recollection is from many years ago, that the indebtedness of the city is the, the maximums are in the Ohio Vice Code at some point, just to mention. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'm Mary Brayley, 1399 Town Hall Road, and I rise in support of the earned income tax ordinance. I'm a longtime Beaver Creek resident, as you know, and a member of the Fair Funding Committee for the past two and a half years. And I would publicly like to thank Brian Jarvis for his many, many hours of research, his countless meetings with all the various people necessary to get this process to this point, his endless patience in trying to explain this complicated system to many like me who have little understanding of all the laws and all of the history behind all of this that's gone before to complicate this issue. Thank you, Brian. Then I would like to thank the council for hearing us and our committee and our concerns about the specific wording that we felt, as we listened to people, was necessary to be included in the ordinance, and the way you managed to do that and still get all the legalese in there, too. If I remember correctly, the last time this vote failed in 2013, our then mayor went to an area mayor's meeting and was sarcastically thanked by the other mayors for the Beaver Creek residents again being, in their word, stupid enough not to pass the income tax, in essence, shooting ourselves in the foot by not understanding what we were giving away. I may actually have been one of those persons who voted against the tax at that time. I don't remember. But I don't like being considered stupid. So I have educated myself the big picture and the intricacies of this complicated issue. And I now am an informed voter and consider this a wise and necessary step. I beg you for a fair and honest consideration on this proposal that I have helped to nurture for these last two years, two and a half years. Tonight, I feel a little like a partial parent or foster or an adopted child with lots of baggage. I have spent two and a half years trying to understand the ins and outs of all of his problems. I have tried to help with hopeful solutions. I have defended him against opposition and misunderstanding. I promoted his good points. I have given him a worthy goal to help others prosper. Tonight feels a little bit like graduation. I'm launching him. I'm giving him, I'm helping to give him to you and the public. Whoops, is that me? Uh-oh.
You finish your.
Three minutes.
Finish up with a sentence or two.
But I believe he has the ability to change this community for good. Give him a fair chance. Be kind in your judgments. Be aware of the difficulties of the path ahead, and choose wisely to support him or not. Please, but please be careful and perhaps gracious in your judgment of him, especially of his motives.
Okay, now we'll wrap it up.
Okay, tonight, I'm finishing. Tonight, he graduates as, with a new title, ordinance number 2009. I urge you to accept him as he is now. Don't judge him for his past mistakes. And I believe if allowed for him to succeed, he will help you and the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address council tonight? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Dave Brown. I live at 140 Shelford Way in Beaver Creek. The BFFC Pro Income Tax Group is recommending imposing a 1% income tax in the city of Beaver Creek. The members of the BFFC are retired and would not be subject to the income tax, could also see a reduction in their property taxes. I'm retired, like the leaders of the BFFC group, but don't think it is right or fair to shift possibly a substantial income tax burden onto Beaver Creek working families and singles. And now, during a pandemic with so many unemployed, I think it's wrong to place this additional stress and burden on them. One of the claims of the BFFC group is that non-resident workers who pay income taxes where they live are not paying their fair share to Beaver Creek for city services. So we need an income tax to make them pay 1% to Beaver Creek. However, these workers do support our city. Every day they work, when they frequent Beaver Creek resident businesses and restaurants, before and after work and at lunchtime, and most even when they come into Beaver Creek, probably use 675 or 35 and aren't even using our roads. So by BFFC's logic, we should start charging non-resident choppers at the Green or the Fairfield Mall for city services. Besides, companies that these non-residents work for pay property taxes to the city as well as to the township, county, and schools. Another claim being made by the BFFC group is that we need a city income tax to reduce the property taxes of retirees on fixed income. However, only noncontinuing city property tax levies are subject to reduction, which means only 3.4 percent, 3.4 mills, rather, of property tax could be reduced out of a total of 18.85 mills currently being paid to the city by Beaver Creek property owners. A 3.4 more mill reduction would provide hardly any aid to seniors with their property taxes. And Beaver Creek's 107-mill total property tax rate is still less than those of Kettering, Centerville, and Belbrook. This proposed income tax is not the way to help seniors with their property taxes. The income tax ordinance is ill-timed and bad for the residents of Beaver Creek. Property taxes have worked very well for Beaver Creek for 40 years, and we should be proud that Beaver Creek is the largest city in Ohio not to have an income tax.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do we have anybody out in the hall? Nobody downstairs? Do we have written input?
I do, Mayor. Donna Sales at 4221 Mapleview Drive wrote to us. You all have copies of these inputs, and she is stressing her favoritism towards the income tax. Dave Roberts of 2272 North Tulane Drive expressed his concern with the income tax and is not for it. And John Mitchell of Beaver Creek, he did not give me his street address, is also against the income tax. the income tax. For the reference, sir.
Just the three.
Just those three.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone in the room that has comments? In that case, we will close that portion of this ordinance hearing. The, a couple of things we need to address tonight, other than your regular discussion, is we need to address the suggested change on page 44, and then we need to address whether or not we are going to have a normal two reading or have a, extend this to the three reading, as we've discussed previously. So we'll open it up. Councilmember Bales, would you like to start with any comments?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank all of the citizens that provided input tonight. I appreciate your comments and all of the ones that took time to, to write emails as well. I'd like to share my thoughts on the subject. As I've lived in Beaver Creek my entire life, I've seen it grow from a township into a city and then transform itself into the most desirable location in the region from a residential and commercial perspective. We are no longer a farming community. We're no longer a township. We are a big city. With that, we have big city issues. Our infrastructure is huge. The demand for police services is never-ending and growing daily. The desire for high-quality parks and recreation and senior adult services is a requirement. It's not a request. When you add it all up and then ask our residents to only, to fund everything through their property tax, it just doesn't make sense to me. Our property taxes are so high that they are forcing some longtime residents to really make a choice whether they can afford to live here or not, and that concerns me. Our current method of funding government operations, in my opinion, is not equitable and is not sustainable. During my campaign for City Council, I revolved around two basic platforms: keep Beaver Creek affordable by finding alternative revenue sources and reducing our reliance on property taxes to fund all government services. So while I understand that this tonight is just the first step, and ultimately, the decision will be made by every voter in Beaver Creek, I want to urge everyone to read the legislation, understand the tax documents, become informed, and ask plenty of questions. And I know that the city staff and the Fair Funding Committee will be around the community many times between now and November, and there will be plenty of opportunity to get the facts. I'd like everyone to base their decisions on the facts and what's best for the community. I understand also that nobody likes paying taxes. I don't like paying taxes. But for the future and the prosperity of the city of Beaver Creek, I personally will pay my fair share, and I'm happy to make the investment in the community. And that's what I've got to say about this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Duer.
Thank you, Mayor. In 2013, I voted against the income tax. That's where I stand, stood at that time. I would like to take the opportunity, though, to, to thank the Fair Funding Committee because there's really some excellent research in there, some excellent work. And I want to thank Mr. Jarvis publicly because he spent a lot of time answering an awful lot of questions. And so regardless of where I fall, where I vote on this, I want to say thank you because there is an input to the debate on, on making the city of Beaver Creek better. So thank you. I do think that it's justified to take this to a, a third reading, in this case, given the importance of this discussion. I've thought my way around this a lot, but I do not know everything, and so I encourage more public debate, more people to, to write in, send their messages, to speak publicly, to give us more information on which to, on which to chew. I share Mr. Corvo's philosophy in terms of some of my concerns, and I think Mr. Lewis's questions deserve direct answers in terms of what's, what's in here in particular. Being on this side, City Council could get caught holding the ball, so to speak, with a lot of major issues that will come due, the $200 million potential infrastructure issue that Mr. Jarvis mentioned. Those are very concerning to me, and so I think this is a useful debate in which to hear more. And so I invite all of you to continue sending comments and discussing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia.
Ah, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a quick question for Mr. McHugh before I give too many comments. I just want to clarify, on page eight, Section 11A, when it talks about military pay or allowances of members of armed forces being exempt, that is, is that strictly active-duty military and reserves, or are we talking about contractors and civilians that work on the base?
No.
I just want to make sure I clarify that publicly. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah. You're on page eight, that's one section here.
11A.
11, yeah, we find. Military pay for allowances of members.
Yeah, that's not civilian.
Including National Guard.
I know, you get a right answer.
Yeah, so you're not gonna, it's not gonna be for a contractor.
Okay, thank you.
Unless they're in the military, in the National Guard, then that portion would be right.
Right. No, I appreciate the clarification because I know we do have a lot of residents in Beaver Creek who work on the base, who are civilian but work military, and I wanted to make sure that that was publicly clarified as to what that means as far as the exemptions go.
Yeah.
So I appreciate that.
The military is low unusual, too, because of their domicile. Depending on where their domicile.
Right.
May not, because the code, Ohio law also provides in here that, that it is based upon where your domicile depended upon your military pay. So if you're on the base, you're not taxed, you, a city that includes a portion of the, of the base does not have the right to tax everyone who's on that portion of the base. They can only tax that portion if that happens, the person who's on that portion or works on the base happens to also be domiciled. I mean, that's one of the provisions of the code. That was, that was the City of Riverside litigation number years ago. Yeah, that's what that, that provision was put in specifically for that question.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you. Like I said, we have a number of people, and given our close ties to Wright-Patt, I just wanted to make sure we clarified that a little bit more and went into a little bit extra detail on that. I also agree with Councilmember Bales. This is very complicated and complex, and it affects every individual differently. So I encourage everyone to read, ask questions, let us know if there's anything we can do to help you understand this better. I think the most important thing we can do is make sure everyone is well-informed of how it affects them individually as a voter. I also agree with Councilmember Duer on leaning to having a third reading for this, especially under the circumstances that we're currently living in right now. There may be a number of people who would like to come out and just aren't ready to yet, and maybe by the third reading, we'll have a little bit more leeway to do so. A few other things I wanted to stress is that this is, if this is approved, if it is approved by the voters, this would not be effective until January 1st of 2022. I think that's important for people to remember because I do understand that, you know, we are facing a difficult situation with some employment, unemployment rates. And I think, you know, as you're considering this, it's easy to just consider the situation that we're in right now on May 26th, but also consider the situation that we may be in on January 1st of 2022, and this would actually be enacted. I think what's most important about this is that this is not something that City Council can do on its own. We just can't say, hey, we're gonna have an income tax tomorrow, just so you know. This is something that the residents are gonna vote on. So what we're here to do is to make sure that everyone understands everything and give the most education and knowledge as we can so that people are well-informed as they make a decision if that's something that we decide to do. So I appreciate all the staff's input, the Fair Funding Committee, all of your hard work for this, hoping that we can make this something that's understandable for all the residents. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor. In reading over the ordinance and kind of going through a lot of these, as Councilmember Garcia said, there's a lot of information here. I mean, there's pages upon pages of tax code which are very difficult to understand, difficult to comprehend. So please, please, please do not hesitate to reach out and ask questions, ask questions of staff, ask questions of council. We are here to help you. In regards to some of Mr. Lewis's concerns, particularly the tax credit, that actually is in the ordinance, it's in Section 3 of the ordinance that says that there will be the 100% tax credit for up to Beaver Creek's income tax rate. And so I just kind of wanted to draw that to your attention. As far as the indebtedness, I'm not sure. Could you opine on that, council, or not?
It's in the Ohio Code.
Is it in the revised code?
In terms of our borrowing capacity, yes. There are limited, limits in the Ohio Revised Code based upon your, it's based upon your earnings, really about based upon your income. So that is correct.
And the only reason I bring those to attention is that we're all here to find the answers to your questions. So please, if you continue to have questions, bring them to our attention, and we'll find those answers for you. I do agree with Councilmember Duer. I would support a third reading of this. Given the circumstances and the way the environment is today, I want to make sure that everyone has the ability to submit input, whether it's being here in person or submitting an email or calling the council's chambers. Last but not least, I want to thank staff and the Beaver Creek Fair Funding Committee for all of the hard work that you guys have put into this. It has been a lot to just inform council on, as a body. I can only imagine the amount of questions and things you have addressing citizens' concerns. So I really do appreciate that, and I really encourage the citizens to use some of the resources that are out there. Frankly, I saw that the income tax calculator will be distributed. I think that that's a great resource. Being someone who would be impacted by the income tax, it was very easy for me to input my income and pull my property taxes and see what savings I would potentially be getting by the 3.4 mil street levy falling off. So I think that is all that I have, Mayor.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. I think most of the comments.
I would have said have been already spoken here by alerted members of the council. I'd certainly agree with Councilmember Duer on the third reading, number two. Again, special thanks to the committee for all the hard work they've put in, and special thanks to all the comments by people in the room, both pro and con. It's, we can use this information in, in our discussions as to how to further move along on this issue. Remember that when you look at the metropolitan area, you've got Dayton and Kettering, and then who's the largest? Beaver Creek, number three. So following up on what Councilmember Bales said, we're not a rural community anymore. We're a very fast-growing area and one that has a lot of demands, and I think that this puts us in a position to be able to meet those demands that have been presented by the city manager and the staff as well as citizens over the years. So I thank everybody for their input tonight and look forward to hearing from the citizens in the weeks to come. Thank you. Thank you. Vice Mayor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank the Beaver Creek Fair Tax Committee and our staff here for all the work they've put into it. There was a lot of hours that go into it. I've listened to them for quite some time now, and I'm learning a lot. Also had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Corvo and Mr. Lewis while I was running for office, and I, I respect their, their opinions. I will agree with Councilman Duer. Back in 2013, I did vote against it. I have lived in Beaver Creek now for, since the mid-'70s, and I've watched it grow, as Councilman Bales said, from basically a township to a thriving city. And we do need alternate ways to fund this city because there's a lot of needs out here. I've worked with the Police Department for several years, and I know a lot of the needs of, just because of my relationship there, of what I've been able to see in the city and some of those needs. Since being on this side, seeing some of the unmet needs that we have are really kind of wearing on me because I know there's, each one of those may only affect one or two people at this point, but if they continue, I really believe that it's gonna affect a lot more of us, and we have to have a way of addressing those needs. I do agree with the third reading. I think this is an important item that needs to be really vetted as well as we can vet it. I really encourage anyone to come forward and speak to us. If you have questions, please ask them. I'm learning about this a lot myself. I don't know all the answers. I don't even attempt to know all the questions. So please, see us as often as you can, ask us, because we learn along the same way as you guys do. So, and again, thank you all that showed up tonight for your, to give your input. We appreciate that. And anyone that's watching, as we go through with the second reading and hopefully the third reading, we will have more input and make the decision a little bit easier for us. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, just for a little bit of clarification for the general public that may be watching, this is, what we're discussing tonight is an ordinance which, if the ordinance, even if the ordinance is passed, it does not go on the ballot. It's, that's a whole different action. That's something that will take place later in the year, and it may, may not go on this year's ballot. It might be, go on the spring ballot, or it might not ever go on the ballot. Where, what we will be discussing over the next couple of months is this particular ordinance that if there were to be an income tax, this is what it would be. And then it's up to those that wish to have the income tax to be out and sell it, and it's up to those that do not want the income tax to be out there and oppose it. And it's a, you know, it's a choice. It's purely and very simply a choice as to how you wish to fund your own community. And are you getting a fair shake from those people that work here and do not pay property tax? And that is, at this particular stage of our history, we probably are more concentrated in that area than ever before. You take the other cities that, in Ohio, that do not have an income tax, they are cities that do not have any industry or any businesses either. They're purely residential communities. So it's a choice, and it's a choice that I think is a reasonable thing for a community to do every, periodically. And in the past, it had been about every 10 years. It's a hair shorter that this time, but, you know, the people are ultimately the ones that are gonna make this decision. And all we can do, and what we're going to do, is try to, if we decide to give the people that option, is to make it an option that is a good option should they decide to take it. So that's why we want these discussions to, what needs to be in the ordinance, what needs to be addressed that may not already be addressed. And there's gonna be other things, I'm sure even that didn't, weren't discussed here tonight, that are gonna come out. And if we can, they can be addressed, we have to follow the Ohio Revised Code, and sometimes they can't be addressed. But I encourage everybody, I don't, I don't care whether you're for it or whether you're against it, I encourage everybody to get active in this effort because it will make a difference. If it fails, it won't come back for some time likely. If it passes, it'll make a difference in our city and what can be accomplished in the future. So that said, I would like to ask if Mr. Landham or Mr. McHugh have any response to any of the input that we had tonight, any of the questions that were asked. I know we got the answer to one about indebtedness, that it's a, it's a state mandate as far as percent of your, based on your revenue, correct?
It is a formula, yes, Mayor.
And if we could get that so that, just so we have that reference and the public has that reference as well, I'd appreciate that. Anyone, anything?
I was unclear on a couple of things that were questioned, a public vote over 1% that all, not on.
A little confused on what was meant by a few things, definitely not clear. The college students, as far as paying that, we have no choice. We absolutely buy Ohio law that changed in 2016, is it, Mr. McHugh?
Correct.
Dictated that. So before 16, we could have dictated. We would have had a choice on whether to do that or not. Now, since we have waited, now there is no choice in that matter. Anyone, cannot be exempted. Public vote, of course, our charter clearly says that anything, any income tax has to be voted on by the voters for Beaver Creek. That's why this is here. Ohio law says that a county... Ohio law says that a council shall, can impose up to a 1%. But here in Beaver Creek, many years ago, when the charter was created, that was put in so that we could not follow Ohio Revised Code, that we only could, we had to put it up for a vote. So if we put this up for a vote, and let's say it gets adopted by the people, we have 1% on, then we could, if we, you know, come back 10 years later and wanted anything, a quarter percent, a tenth of a percent, anything, we would have to, again, put it on for a vote. And now, that would be not only because of our charter, but that would be because of Ohio Revised Code. And even if the charter changed and said, hey, council can impose anything up to 2% now, we still have our charter that says anything would have to be put up. So, so that is, that is a protection there. We do have a timeline that we gave to council. It is very tight. The next readings, if the ordinance becomes adopted, after third reading, we have 30 days. So it is, the last meeting in July is the last time to do a resolution to put it on the ballot. After that, we're done. Unless you have a special meeting or something, you have, may have a couple of days to fit that in. But it has to, Board of Elections in Ohio election law has laws on the timing of all that to dictate that. That's not anything that we're dictating. That's how things have to go onto the ballot. And the credit was already in the debit, so that's all I have at this point.
All right. Thank you. All right, so first off, we need to address the suggested change on page 44. And if I can get a real short explanation of that removal of the word county?
Oh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may. Yeah, and 39.081, Section D, it, right now reads, "No credit shall be given for any county or school district income tax." So this whole 39.081 goes into the 100%, goes into, Section D actually is the part C, sorry, the Section C of 39.081 is the part that says that the 100% credit cannot be changed without first obtaining the approval of the change by a majority of the electors of the city at a general election. So it's saying that it has to go by vote if any of the credit would change. Part of this credit was, it used to say, when it first came out, it said Ohio. And we backed out on Ohio, knowing that we have people that may pay an income tax to Indiana or Kentucky. And we were like, well, that's fair, because we, Beaver Creek is Beaver Creek. If you're a resident, if you're paying income tax anywhere. But we didn't remove the word county, because I, I think it's foreign to us for a county to have an income tax. It's not in Ohio. Ohio counties are ran by sales tax generally. But then it came to my attention that Kentucky, just across the border, has several counties that do collect like an income tax, and there's some residents that literally do work there, and it's a, it's an income tax. It's a county income tax. So it was just, whether or not council wants to give that same feeling to it, we, we took out Ohio, now do we want to take out county or not to give Beaver Creek residents, if they're paying an income tax to a county, credit or not? If you remove the word, it'd be county or, and then that way it would just read, no credit shall be given for any school district income tax. So that, that's at the will of council.
Okay. And again, it's, the way, the way our tax system is set up currently is, that's fine. But if that tax system was to change, and you, all of a sudden, the states said counties can have an income tax. So my question would be to Mr. McHugh, can you, instead of saying eliminating county, can you say in-state county, or something like that? You're trying to accomplish out-of-state.
I'll certainly look at it. This is, this is something that just got recently, oh, sorry. This is really something that came up today, so I mean, I will look and look at that issue as to whether we could limit it to counties in Ohio, effectively a county income tax or earnings taxes, really, if you call it.
And then if we're going to do that, I need to, the question answered, this is such a minor change that it would not affect going back to a first reading again? If we did not make it tonight and made it?
No, no, this, no, this would not, this would not revert back.
Yes.
Correct, Mayor.
Okay. Now, that doesn't mean we can't. If the council's decision is that they would like to go ahead and make that change, I would certainly entertain a motion. Hearing none, we will move forward. I would also now then like a, a motion from council that we extend this from the, from the today's normal two readings to a three-reading ordinance.
So moved?
I have a motion and a second to treat this ordinance as a three-reading ordinance. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, any further discussion on the ordinance itself? Please.
Mayor and council, this, the question was raised, and the manager touched on this, but I just want to read specific language, because this was added, this is not in, this is outside of the Ohio Revised Code, but we want to make sure it was very clearly stated, and that is, that is in the credit section, subsection C, there's a statement in there that says, referring to the income tax credit, that it shall not be changed without first obtaining the approval of the change by a majority of the electors of the city at a general election. So that was an additional, you know, understanding the, the citizens would have that question about changing the credit, and so it was specifically felt that, again, it would have to take an election, and the citizens would vote on it. The other provision is, is it just, this 1%, just to point out, that is in Section 718.04C, subsection 2 of the Ohio Revised Code. And what that provides is that, and this has been this way for, ever since the income tax by knowledge, that any, any income rate in excess of 1% has to be voted on. So, anything above it, which is, that mirrors, and that's probably even potentially when, when the charter was originally created, that may be somewhat some of the impetus for that language also. So any, any income tax over and above this rate will change, and that is, I've never known of, I've know of, no legal authority for a city council to raise above 1% without a vote. You have to have a vote.
Mr. McHugh, if the state were to raise that, does our city charter still cover? So if the state were to raise that to 1.5%?
In my opinion, yes.
Would the city charter still cover that we would still have to do the vote?
Yes, because arguably, if we follow state law and said our charter didn't take precedence in this situation, we'd have a 1% income tax by council with no vote of the public.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Thank you. All right, so our intent tonight is to either let this resolution drop, or to move it on to the second and third reading. So, do I have a motion?
So moved, go on to the second reading.
Second and third.
Second hearing.
I have a motion to move. Ordinance 20-09 on to the second and third reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, thank you. All right, so now I have a second. I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 20-09 on to the second and third reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. And I do want to once again encourage the general public to make your voice heard. Let us know, we're going to have a public hearing on June 8th, I think is the next hearing. And so that will be a public hearing as well, and we will allow public input, and if we need to, we will, you know, we will make room, we will rotate people in and out if we have that bigger crowd. So, please, we, we took the extra step tonight to, because of this ordinance, to be here, even though we might otherwise have probably gone on a Zoom meeting. So, please, get out and let us know what you're thinking, how it can be made better if it can. So, with that, we will move on. Next item is ordinance 20-08.
This is the first reading of an ordinance to change the name of a section of Shaker Town Road to Old Shaker Town Road.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council, happy to be before you this evening. The city has recently completed a Shaker Town, or is in the process of completing the Shaker Town Road Extension Project. As a result of that project, a small section of the original Shaker Town Road still remains. And as a result, there is need to rename a small section of road. Highlighted in your packet and also up on the screen is the small extension going to what was Shaker Town Road, and a small cul-de-sac at the end. City staff is recommending renaming this section of the road, Old Shaker Town Road. And there were three parcels that were impacted by this name change, and letters were sent out to the residents of those three parcels, and there was only one comment back in, in favor of changing that name. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that, that you have at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions?
Moved, we approve these words, 2008.
How about we move it to the second reading?
Second reading.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 20-08 on to the second reading. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is Resolution 20-12.
This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Beaver Creek Township for the maintenance and operation of a traffic signal at the intersection of Shaker Town Road and Factory Road.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, happy to be before you again. The same project, the result of the Shaker Town Road Extension Project resulted in two additional signals being installed, one at South Alpha Bell and the Shaker Town Road, and one at Shaker Town and Factory Road. The signal at Shaker Town and Factory Road is, actually a portion of it is inside the city limits, and a portion of it is inside the township limits. Since this project was created, initiated by the city of Beaver Creek, we've proposed an agreement with Beaver Creek Township that that signal will be maintained by the city of Beaver Creek. It will tie back to the other signal that is also inside the city limits. The same controllers will be used, and our maintenance staff is certainly very familiar with the maintenance of that as well. We have a draft agreement before you this evening. We're requesting permission to authorize the city manager to enter into this agreement. And I should note that the township has already passed this resolution as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on this as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I simply wanted to state that the extension road looks great, traffic signal looks really smooth, so thank you to all that worked on that.
I'll pass that along to our engineering team and the design firm that helped us with this. I believe this one was Wolfert, actually, that helped us with this design. So I'll pass that along to both of them.
Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve Resolution 20-12.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 20-12. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is Resolution 20-14.
This is a resolution to authorize the application for the Bulletproof Vest Partnership 2020 federal grant program on behalf of Beaver Creek Police Department.
Good evening.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council. The Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant is before you. It's a federal grant to provide funding for 50% of the total cost of the city's purchase of the approved bulletproof vest. Since 2000, the police department has taken advantage of this federal grant each year in defraying the cost to the city in purchasing officers' bulletproof vests. To date, a total of $54,624.66 of federal money has been approved to aid in the purchase of these vests for the city. This year, we're anticipating purchasing 20 vests, replacement vests for patrol officers for a total cost of $16,460. The city share would be 50% of that, $83.30. Additional money is replaced in the police budget to defray these costs, and staff is recommending council approve this proposal.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would just say that, Chief, I appreciate you looking into ways to help save the city some money, and I think these are absolute necessities, so absolutely all for it. And if there's no other comment, I would move to approve Resolution 20-14.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 20-14. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next decision item, acceptance of first quarter financial summary. Do we need any further input on this? We had some discussion on it earlier.
Right, Mr. Mayor, we had a detailed description last week at the work session where Bill Casera Finance gave. Unless there's any additional questions, we'll be happy to answer them. Anybody missed, though, too, what's been interesting is that the videos that we have for work sessions were actually videotaped, so if anybody missed it, they can review it on our YouTube channel, The Financial Report.
Okay, thank you. Any comments? Do I have a motion?
I move to accept the first quarter 2020 financial summary.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the first quarter 2020 financial summary. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same. Motion carries. All right, moving on, it's council time. And we're going to start on my far left today, and then we'll start with Councilmember Carron.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate Kim Farrell. Everybody's got a note in front of them here, but she's been elected to the Board of Ohio Parks and Recreation Association, which Mr. Bales has very informed and deeply involved in over a number of years. So, all the best wishes to Kim. Also want to thank the citizens of Beaver Creek for the many, many days and weeks that have gone by here where people have been somewhat isolated and somewhat limited in what they've been able to do, but have seen a lot of good, people following masking and following the social distance issues that have been presented. I just want to congratulate people for all their efforts in that particular area. Also, our restaurants are opening and for in-house dining. So we want to try to encourage all of our citizenry to stop by, and I know that many restaurants are happy for the takeout effort, but now they're beginning the in-house dining, and so we hope that citizens will take part in that. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, I think that we should all remember where we were at at this point last year. Not only was it Memorial Day weekend, but we also had the Memorial Day tornado. And so I think that we should all take a time to reflect, see where we have come from there. I know that there have been some news broadcasts on where Beaver Creek has improved and how we are continuing to improve, so don't forget where we were at and just take some time to reflect. Next, I had the pleasure of attending the Memorial Day Ceremony yesterday. While it wasn't an official ceremony, it was nice to recognize our fallen service members. Last, and certainly not least, we had our Fourth of July meeting this afternoon at 4:00, and as an update, we are still continuing to work through, and hopefully we'll have a decision by next week. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Councilmember Garcia.
Hi, yes, thank you. Not too much, just, I still continue to go to the MVRPC meetings virtually until we're able to meet in person. Our next MVRPC meeting is June 4th, so I'll have an update for you after that. And as of today, gyms, dance studios, and personal fitness centers are allowed to reopen, so I hope everyone gets out, gets dancing, and gets moving a little bit. so I hope everyone gets out, gets dancing, and gets moving a little bit. So thank you for everything.
Thank you. Councilmember Duer.
Thank you, Mayor. I mentioned at the work session, just a major thank you to all the teachers in Beaver Creek. I'll echo that, given that this is the, we just saw the formal end of the, of the year. They put in a lot of hard work to move everything online, so thank you to the teachers. I'll echo Councilmember Schwartz's comments on the Memorial Day ceremony and while unofficial, I think it's very important to reflect, and especially those that have given their lives in service. I had the opportunity to play Beaver Creek Golf Club last week, and I think, I want to commend the golf club for putting in place a number of measures to really make people feel safe to golf in the clubhouse as well as on the course. I think in the midst of what could be a lot of staycations, I'd encourage people to go and play the golf course. It's in, it's in really good shape and a lot of good social distancing measures have been put in place. As Councilmember Schwartz said as well, this marks tomorrow at 11:15 PM, the Memorial Day tornadoes that came through the Miami Valley. The last house on my street got its roof redone this week, and so a lot of people are still rebuilding. Bear in mind the Garden View neighborhood that was hit very, very hard. And I'd like to encourage everyone at home as well. Most insurance companies keep open a file for a year, and so that year is coming due soon. So bear in mind, if you have other comments for an insurance adjuster, you still have, under most insurance plans, an opportunity to do so, especially if you're unhappy or trying to rebuild or feel like you've been not credited enough, things like that. The one-year moratorium is ending. Finally, I've reached out to a number of small businesses. Some are really hurting, so please remember to shop local. Remember, too, that a number of franchises are even locally owned, the chains are locally owned, so please make sure that you continue to shop Beaver Creek. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Vales.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm probably going to repeat everything that everyone said, but that's okay. I think it's, it's really worth repeating. First, it's, it feels good to be back in this room with everybody. It's nice to have a live meeting as opposed to Zoom and hear from all of the folks in the audience, so I'm glad to be back here. Like Councilmember Curran said, I want to thank our fellow citizens who really abided by the governor's orders and, and took it to heart and stayed safe and so forth. But as our economy opens up, like Councilman Duer said, let's try and shop locally as much as we can. That's going to really make a biggest impact on Beaver Creek. Along those same lines, I want to thank the city staff for being very proactive during the pandemic. Took a lot of great initial steps quickly and early, and I think that it helped us continue the operations without a beat, even though we had to adapt and work from home and do a lot of changes. But I appreciate the work that you've done, Mr. Landrum and your staff. Thank you very much. I think a lot of the changes we've made actually will lead to efficiencies in our operations, and they may actually stay around even after the pandemic is over. We are on the eve of the anniversary of the tornadoes, so I want to express my appreciation to all of our residents and all of those around the Miami Valley, frankly, who dedicated a lot of time this last year with recovery and rejuvenation in the entire region and especially here in Beaver Creek. I think our community really came together very strongly, and I'm proud of the distance we've come in this last year, so that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Adams.
I'd like to echo Councilman Vales in thanking the city staff for all they did during this pandemic, and I know there's still a lot more to do. It's certainly not over yet, but we wanted to thank you for being out there doing what needed to be done. I know in some cases you put yourselves in harm's way to do that, especially the police department out there dealing with that every day, so I certainly appreciate that. Also want to give a big thank you to Beaver Creek Chamber of Commerce for the different Zoom meetings that they've been holding over the past several weeks to keep everybody up to date on the pandemic and the different things that we can do with it. I've seen several people in this room have been on those. And I also ask that you support our local businesses as they do open up. They certainly do need our support. This past Wednesday, I was able to be a part of a food giveaway at Beaver Creek High School sponsored by Feed the Creek. I want to thank the Beaver Creek Rotary Club for their donation to Feed the Creek for, to allow for that food to be there, and it was great to see so many people out there helping during these trying times. And then finally, I've got a personal thing I want to share. Most, a lot of you know this, but you at home don't know this. My granddaughter had a little girl this past Friday, and as a result, I'm now a great-grandfather. So I wasn't able to meet her until yesterday because of the rules at the hospital, which was, it was really rough on my wife. She couldn't be there, but we, we got to meet her yesterday, and I think, I think I've fallen in love all over again.
That's great.
Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you. All right, well, we've all been repeating each other a little bit, but it is a very important time. And on the, on the tornado anniversary, it is something that we had all hoped that we'd be having a celebration in the streets tomorrow or someday close, and that it's just not going to happen. So I'm looking forward to the continued rejuvenation of the damaged areas, and it's really coming along nicely. But I'm really looking forward to a nice, calm Memorial Day next year so that we can get out and dance in the street. We can have a celebration that'll get some emotional peace to those, to the victims of the tornado. You know, you can, you can damage all the buildings you want, but you still have that inside emotion and that hardship that the individuals suffered that needs hands-on communication with the community. So I'm looking forward to that. As far as the Memorial Day event, you know, we had the option of just saying, we're not going to do that. And staff and myself just thought, well, let's talk to the VFW and American Legion and see if they would like to do something. And so you all saw the memo, and they, they jumped to the occasion and went out and did a nice, very brief program. So I want to thank the staff, I want to thank the American Legion and the VFW for stepping up to the plate on that, when it would have been a lot easier for us and to just say, we'll wait to, again, till next year. But, you know, we just can't do that with certain occasions in my book. So that said, I agree with all the comments everybody else has made. It's been an interesting time. Be careful. I mean, we're loosening up, we're going back to businesses, we're going back to restaurants. Just, and I may be one of the worst offenders, but be a little bit careful. I mean, be, take caution and do what's right. Do what makes you feel comfortable. You don't necessarily have to do what everybody else is doing, but do what makes you feel comfortable. So with that, I would like to turn it over to the city manager for a report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As was already mentioned, I'll congratulate Kim Farrell, or City Parks Superintendent, being elected to the Ohio Parks and Recreation Association. That's, that just shows the quality of staff that we have here and quality of our parks. And Kim, not only will be able to share what we do as a standard, but we'll actually get ideas from others that are, you know, higher, high standards as well and, and to improve our park system. So congratulations, Kim. I know she'll do a great job. Road projects, I want to mention two, one's in the packet, one's not. This one's Kemp Road widening project. You know, Dayton-Zenia and Kemp Road, if you, unless you don't drive it, you can tell. To get anywhere, I get, unless I'm going to Dayton, I have to drive Kemp or Dayton-Zenia. So I'm hitting it either way, unless I had a helicopter. But Kemp Road is anticipated to begin within the next couple of weeks, so weather dependent, of course. The contractor would begin constructing a temporary pavement along the south side of Kemp Road and storm sewer installation. So that's the first part of, of that to come. I did want to address something we put on social media, it's on our website as well, but people keep questioning, get good responses on the, if you're on US 35, the eastbound exit ramp on the research park, there's lights there now. That is part of the ODOT project because of the closure of the ramp from eastbound US 35 to southbound I-675. They've shut that down, and that's not going to be reopened till September. So that is an ODOT detour, is what that is. We have no control, zero zilch nada. We can't control that. That is part of ODOT's responsibilities. So that may be around for a little while, as they said, until September or so. So just be aware of that. There probably will be a little bit more traffic getting off of that ramp and taking research and then getting back on 35 on the other side of North Fairfield. So just be aware of that. As everybody said, you know, I remember real plain, of course, I relate it. I know it's not till tomorrow, it's the 27th because of leap year, but it was Memorial Day. I'll never forget as well, last night, I thought about it when I was going to bed, thinking, hey, I didn't go to bed last year. You know, I think last year here, many of us were hopped up on sugar, coffee, caffeine, everything, just to stay awake because we had not slept. But that was nothing because we were serving our residents the best we could this time last year and trying to figure out what the next steps were. But many have began to rebuild, and it's still ongoing. As Councilmember Duer said, he just had a neighbor put on a roof from that, some are still dealing with that. But there's been a lot of improvements, and I continue to encourage residents to continue with that. It's looking nice. I know you hate to go through a devastation like that, but some of the houses being built are just amazing. It's like, wow, the improvements even on the remodels that have happened, adding porches, adding different sightings, higher pitch roofs, metal roofs. I mean, it breaks up what the neighborhood was before, absolutely, but I think in devastation, sometimes you have to look at the positive. But congratulations to those that have been able to get back in and continued prayers for those that are still struggling to rebuild, repair, and get their lives. And as Mayor said, we'll get the physical back, but they, there'll be more emotional aspects that ever, you know, if you, if you follow the Facebook tornado, Beaver Creek tornado, you'll see that every time there's a big thunderstorm or somebody letting off a big bang that they didn't know what was, they're jumpy. They really are, and for good reason, for a good reason. Just as what the two pictures that I always said that really instilled Beaver Creek, you know, that we survived, that Beaver Creek's strong, that's what it was about. And I think that's why Beaver Creek sets itself aside and apart from other communities is that through, through the worst of it, they, they put up these signs. And that house on the right, that's a corner of Ruston and I forget what the other road, the other corner is. But that house, that was sad because that house, they had just remodeled, poured new concrete driveway, put up new fence, new roof, new insides, and less than the, probably six months' time of them being finished, you see what's left of the home. And it's a vacant lot today. I hope they, hope they rebuild. But our thoughts and prayers are still with the neighborhoods and all those impacted throughout the city. I did have one other thing I wanted to mention, and that is what was mentioned tonight, if I failed to mention this. On our Beaver Creek website, if you go there, beavercreechohio.gov, you can go down now, right now, it is alive, thank you Diane, proposed 1% income tax earnings tax legislation. You simply click that, and you'll have the income tax calculator, frequently asked questions, and all the, a whole bunch of other, plus here, it tells a lot about it and talks about the 3.4 mils, a lot of bullet points there, even a chart and graph, and then, of course, the same sources here. So you can either link here to what's on the left-hand side or link up top. Couple different easy locations. So this is a, a good factual place to find the facts. Find, don't worry about, you know, if you hear something that's a rumor, check here for the facts first. Of course, too, the copy of the ordinance and the tax code is here as well. So it's all available right now on beavercreechohio.gov for your pleasure. And that's all I have today, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is citizen comment. Is anyone here this evening that would like to address council on any issue at all? Anyone? Seeing none, we will move on. Anything for the good? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.